I'd like to call the order of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting for July 24th, 2018. Madam Clerk, would you take your role, please?
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Candy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T/Universe Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, July 27th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium and please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you. Would everyone rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
For your consent matters, items 1 through 44, I need a motion to continue item number 7 to August 7th, delegation of authority to the county executive to approve administrative county policies.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. I also need a motion to continue item 31 to September 11th. This is an ordinance that will be introduced on September 11th, repealing and reenacting county fire codes contained in Code Chapter 17.04.
Before we have motions, I just wanted to understand, this is the second time we've continued this, these are state requirements. Are we thinking we can change something?
Supervisor Peters, the continuation last week was due to Supervisor Natoli's just inquiry about the item, and those questions were answered. The continuation this week surfaced as a result of the Metro Fire, who is bringing forward the modifications to the state codes. They have some, a little bit further work to do with two jurisdictions, City of Citrus Heights, as well as City of Rancho Cordova regarding a couple of the recommendations in terms of the code changes. And so they want to have an opportunity to work that through before we brought it finally in front of our board. So that's the reason for this.
Okay, thank you. I'll second the motion then. Please vote.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to thank both county staff, our building officials, and Metro Fire and Consumer Service District Fire officials for meeting with me and went through quite a few of the questions I had. And as Mr. Penrose said, they were answered, and I appreciate the time spent last week. Thanks.
Any other announcements, Madam Clerk?
No announcements for clerk notes.
Madam Chair, I just had one item, item number 32. Madam Clerk, can you read that on the record?
Item 32 is the contract for the Mather Lam, the Mather Lake Dam Improvement Project, final contract acceptance.
We received a question yesterday. We didn't get time to communicate back to the board members, so, Mr. Penrose, can you provide the answer?
The question was in regards to the amount made available by the Air Force for the dam restoration project, which was documented in the board item as 5.3 million. Essentially, it was made available to that. The total cost for the dam restoration project will be less than the 5.3 million. And for clarification, the Air Force is paying just for the actual costs of the jam, dam project. There will be no ability to use any of the savings that were allocated for this, this specific project up to the 5.3 million, so. What you see in the board letter, just for clarification, you see the contract cost, and you don't see the total cost, because that was not, yes, was not reported, but it is less than the 5.3 that's been allocated by the Air Force for this project.
Is that everything, Mr. County Executive?
That is.
Okay, Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
If you're going to have a big discussion about this, I have to leave. I, you know.
Not a big discussion, I said. One follow-up, I actually asked a question last week about this, but my question was just, were there any other items that we would have done, i.e. any additional restoration around the lake that may have, you know, impacted, obviously lowered the spillway, took care of the issue that related to downstream? I just was curious, was there anything else that we would have done beyond just the utility of that, but certainly matching with the project? And that's my question before, again, we didn't know what this was going to come in as, and so my question is, is there anything else we would have accomplished out there relative to landscaping, to trees, you know, beginning with?
No, it's my understanding, Supervisor, that we've done the full scope of the project as was proposed with the Air Force and was the intended funded program.
Okay.
So, all right, thanks.
Did you have any other items, Mr. Natoli?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Frost? Mr. Serna?
Thank you. This is regarding item number eight.
Item number eight is authorization to appoint Stephen M. Garrett as the public defender.
Okay, I want to let the record show that I'm going to abstain on this vote, but before we take the vote on consent with that notation, I want to explain my abstention. It is not because I have little confidence in either of the two finalists for the position of public defender that I'm abstaining, but it is because of what I think was an unfortunate turn of events at the end of the process for selection. Came to my attention very late in the process that certain references were not checked for candidates for this position, and I think it's an important enough one, our public defender, that those references, especially if they're other elected leaders in our judicial system, and those from the bench are not consulted, I think it really leaves that part of understanding as well as you can the candidates left to the curbside. So that, this is not a reflection of the candidates, this is a reflection of the process.
Nothing else? Mr. Natoli?
Yes, I mean, I didn't know if there was going to be additional discussion, but I too wanted to weigh in, and I know certainly the candidates being recommended is here in the audience this morning, and not too much, so much to echo Mr. Serna's comments, but I know that each of us has received input, certainly in support of the recommendation being brought forward by the county exec, but also, I think, in light of, I think, some historical issues in the public defender's office, historical in the sense that, as we've seen, some turnover. Folks that have served with that office, obviously have expressed their concerns about matters that have been handled duly within the framework of personnel ordinances and so forth, but also, I think, as a release disappointment, we had two candidates from the office. And again, communication is, in most cases, you know, in the public record in support of candidates. I'll tell you that I too contemplated abstaining on this. I recognize the responsibility goes with the county executive, and certainly, in this case, Mr. Wagstaff in his deputy position and doing the interviews and conducting that. And I don't want my comments to reflect negatively certainly on any of the candidates that applied for it, and obviously we have a recommendation. I would tell you this, though, that certainly in light of, again, as I use my word, historical issues over the last few years, I think it's critically important that whoever, and obviously we have a recommendation here, Mr. Garrett, that there's a need to, I think, not only address issues, but to bring some healing to the situations that have existed down there. The public defender's office is a very important and critical piece of the justice system in this county, and I think certainly Mr. Gill and Mr. Wagstaff, in their consideration, considered that, but I think that that's going to be key. And I would, again, I guess, address Mr. Gill in this regard, that I think that irrespective of who were chosen as rapporteur, I think it's going to be very, very important, Mr. Gill. You're aware of the issues of which I speak, some of which are known, some of which are obviously of a personnel nature, but I think that's going to be very key. This, this office, obviously, even with what you bring us today, have expressed a kind of a split opinion, at least from their vantage points, and I think that's reflected in some of the comments from the community, some very positive, again, not negative comments about either of the candidates that were the final two. But nonetheless, I wanted to point that out, because I think it's very important. I'm respectful of the county exec's role by charter in bringing, making the department head selections. For many, many years, it's been a very common practice to bring this board for affirmation and confirmation, although I don't believe under the law and under charter that's actually required. But I want to just say this, and say it very publicly, that I think from the standpoint of all of our departments, but certainly with regards to this department, again, there's a critical role when I see, you know, the cases that come before the courts and the public defender and the prosecutor's role and all that. I think there's little time for things that take, distract from that. And so I think it's going to be incumbent upon certainly you, Mr. Gill, you, Mr. Wagstaff, certainly Mr. Garrett, in this appointment, assuming it's approved this morning, to see to it that that healing occurs. And again, you can't make people, you know, I guess, come around, but I think it's going to be very important, because there obviously is, are there divisions, and that's, this department is not an anomaly in that regard, but I think it's very, very important from the standpoint of the work that the public defenders call upon, the leadership in that office. I intend to support your recommendation this morning, not without a lot of thought, I'll just say that, because again, as I said, as I opened my comments, I considered abstaining as well, because I think the message needs to be very clear, that the role of the public defender is key to what we do in justice, carrying out justice in this community, and we have little time for some of the things, I think, that have distracted from the ability for that office to, to, you know, live up to the expectations. We have some very fine people and a very fine staff, legal minds that provide defense for folks in this community. So I guess with that, I'll leave my comments there, and certainly ask that you, Mr. Gill, stay very close on this matter.
Thanks, I will.
Anyone else wish to comment?
No, I wasn't planning to comment, but I have to say, I find character assassination in a public meeting to be really unacceptable, and I have never received so many letters in favor of a candidate. It's unusual, certainly, and there was one letter that said several judges were against this, and when the judges were called, they said, "No, that wasn't their opinion at all." So I just feel very unhappy with this kind of thing being discussed on a personnel decision that's being made by county staff whom we appointed, and we trust that they are going to use their best opinion in appointing someone to this position. So I thank you for that, and?
Can I ask who's assassinating the character of anyone?
Did you just listen to Mr. Natoli?
I didn't think that was character assassination at all.
Yes, it was.
It was not, Madam Chair.
You said that there were problems in the department.
Historical problems.
Well, it certainly sounded like you were blaming them on Mr. Garrett.
Absolutely not. I will dispute that for the record. I did not say that, and I did not even infer that. If you took that from my comments, that was absolutely wrong.
Well, it felt inferred to me.
I said I was supporting the recommendation of the county executive.
I heard that.
Yeah, and I was not demeaning Mr. Garrett, nor the other candidates in this.
I believe you were demeaning him.
Well, I don't believe it at all, and I take great exception to that. That's not my?
I know it's not your style, but?
No, absolutely not.
It sounded like it to me today.
Well, you didn't hear it right.
Okay, so we're back to a call for, oh, excuse me, and I'm going to recuse myself on items 14 and 32, due to potential business conflict of interest.
Need a motion for the balance.
Motion for consent. Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters recused from items 14 and 32, and Supervisor Phil Serna abstained from item number eight. Unanimous vote. Item 45, recognizing Rick Wright for 35 years of service.
Good morning, Chair Peters, members of the board. My name is Cherylyn Davis, Deputy Director at the Department of Human Assistance. I am honored to be here this morning to recognize Rick Wright for 35 years of service. Rick began his employment with Sacramento County at the Department of Human Assistance in June of 1983. Since then, he has worn a variety of hats in a number of classifications within the department. Rick came on board as a clerk, then on to stock clerk and storekeeper during the 80s. In 1989, Rick decided to try the program side of the house and became an eligibility worker. In the mid 90s, moved on to administrative services officer, performing analyst work in both the Information Systems Division and the Internal Security Unit. In 2007, he decided fiscal would be his next adventure and took on the role of Fiscal Services Manager, overseeing the benefits issued to our customers and the payments to our childcare providers. In March of 2018, Rick promoted to Senior Administrative Analyst and is currently the Budget Officer responsible for DHA's Aid Payments Budget Unit. Rick is hardworking, dependable, and always willing to lend a helping hand. Whether it be a challenge or opportunity that arises, Rick's typical response is, "What can I do to help?" He is a team player, and I very much appreciate his positive attitude. When asked what he likes about his job in this department, Rick will tell you that it's all about the people, the customer, making a positive change in the people's lives who we serve. On a personal note, Rick is happily married for 32 years to his wife Candy and has two children, son Chris, age 30, and daughter Stephanie, age 27. In his spare time, you can catch Rick on the golf course. Rick, really, it is a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
You are a valuable asset to the DHA team. Thank you for the enthusiasm, professionalism, dedication that you bring to the job every day. Congratulations on your 35 years of service.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that it's been a pleasure to work in a department for 35 years where I've had so many opportunities to grow, to advance, and certainly a privilege to have had so many great supervisors and managers who've given me opportunities and shown me, mentored me on how to be a great employee. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We don't have very many employees that have 35 years of service, so that's awesome. Thank you for spending all that time with the county.
Welcome.
Okay, next item, please.
Item 46 is the hearing to lean delinquent solid waste service charges and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent solid waste service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
So there are five items that you're approving as the board of supervisors and one item for, as the water agency board. So in today's reports?
Excuse me, could you tell us who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
You're not Wendy Randolph, which is what it says on the staff report.
I apologize. Ben Lamera, Director of Finance.
Thank you.
And in today's reports that you have before you, they contain preliminary information as of June 19th, 2018. The number of delinquent accounts will continue to decrease on these items until these accounts and balances are transferred to the tax process on August 27th. And as requested in previous years, we will provide a report of the numbers to the board when the final transfer to the tax process is complete. And do you want me to go through the recommendations? So the, for item number 46, the recommendation is for the solid waste service charges to be transferred to the, to the tax roll?
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Lamera? Okay. We have a motion, is?
These are public hearings, Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry. Open the public hearing. Anyone here, I don't have anyone signed up. Does anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. We have a motion. Chair will second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 47, this is hearing to lean delinquent storm drainage service charges for the City of Citrus Heights and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
Okay.
And this is, we just need you to vote and approve.
It's the same thing again, only it's the City of Citrus Heights.
The next five items are the same.
Right. I don't know, any questions from the board? Open the public meeting. Anyone wish to speak to this item? Close the public meeting. A motion. Chair will second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 48, hearing to lean delinquent storm drainage service charges for the City of Rancho Cordova and order delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
So same thing, but for the City of Rancho Cordova?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you have a motion? Oh, sorry. Public hearing open. Anyone wish to speak? Public hearing's closed. A motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 49, hearing to lean delinquent storms drainage service charges and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
Okay, same thing. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? See none. Close the meeting. Close the public hearing.
Move the item. Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then you have item 50, hearing to lean delinquent utility taxes and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent utility taxes be collected on the property tax roll.
Okay, same thing, right?
Correct.
A motion? A public hearing? Anyone here to speak to this item? No. Public hearing's closed.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then your final item, you're acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency, hearing to lean delinquent water use service charges and adoption of the resolution ordering the delinquent water use service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
Hey, same story. Public hearing's open. Anyone wish to speak to this item? Don't see anyone waving. Public hearing closed. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
We're almost on time. Well, we're ahead of time.
Do you want to take up your nominations?
Sure, what item is that?
That is?
57.
57.
Okay.
Okay, you're ready? Okay. Item 57, you are continuing to August 21st Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council for your? and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council for your items today. Children's Coalition. Madam Chair?
Chief's recommend Reginald H. Klator to the interest area vacancy and waive the process.
Second.
Please vote. Continue the remainder to September 11th.
Unanimous vote. First Five Sacramento Commission?
Chief's recommend reappointing Donna Snaringer and Christina Elliott as community alternates to the First Five Commission.
Okay. In-home supportive services advisory committee.
Continue to September 11th.
Okay. North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Peters?
Continue to August 21st for District 3 with, and keep the filing open.
Okay. Supervisor Frost?
Continue to August 21st.
Okay. Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Frost?
Continue to August 21st.
And then we have the Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Chief's recommend nominating Nicole Carr, Robert Goss, and Aaron Stumpf to the Bicycle Advisory Committee and waive the process.
Second.
Please vote. Continue the remainder to August 21st.
And then we have the Sacramento Environmental Commission.
Recommend reappointing Mark White and Richard Hun Jr.
Okay. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay.
I really caught up.
Yeah. So it looks like the next item is at 10:15.
We have an off agenda. We have one address, we have an off agenda. Person want to address us?
I was going to wait till the end of the meeting.
Oh, are you? Okay. Mr. Baker, they're in the middle of pear harvest. If we could take his comments, I would ask him.
All right. Mr. Baker? Off agenda item. And you know, since this is not our agenda, we can't take any action. Is that correct?
I'm not asking you to take any action here today. I appreciate you taking the time to hear my comments and.
You state your name for the record.
My name is Brett George Baker. And as Mr. Natoli mentioned, we're just beginning pear harvest today. So I just wanted to come up here, and I figured this is my last opportunity to make comments, make you aware of some of these issues before, oh, before our assessment proceeding actually went through. And so I have some written comments. I submitted them by email electronically. Apparently they didn't get through. I'll provide this written copy here to you when I'm done. I just would like to read it into the record if I could. Honorable Supervisors, I Brett Baker am writing you today on behalf of my family's ranch. I have the APN number listed here. On Sutter Island, within the boundaries of Reclamation District 349, in the southern reaches of the county. This property has been our family since the 1800s. I am writing you today to inform you of some issues and developments regarding the potential levy of a proposed groundwater management fee via Proposition 218. Reclamation District 349 has had some procedural irregularities. That's their term, not mine. I provided an attachment with an email documenting this. They've made the North Delta Groundwater Sustainability Agency aware of these irregularities and taking their legislative action to join this JPA. I further contend that the North Delta Groundwater Sustainability Agency fee proposal has been effectuated in such a manner as to be violative of the constitutional restraints in Proposition 218. I provided a form of their notice. That's Attachment B. I'm also writing to inform you that if the said assessment is passed and adopted by the Indy GSA, is my intention to formally protest and litigate the imposed, the imposition of this fee. So I can go into further detail. I can just give you this copy here if you have any questions.
If you just give it to the clerk, she'll make copies and make sure everyone has it.
All right. Thank you so.
Thank you for taking time to come in today.
Thank you so much for listening to me early.
Good luck with the pears.
Thanks, Brett.
Any other business before?
Pear Fair is last Sunday in July.
Very good.
That's next Sunday.
No further business.
We'll recess till 10:15.